First, we'll allow law right and prayer and the legions. Stay with us on our way to go.
Our heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this nation that you've allowed us to be a part of. We thank you for the men and women that are fighting for our freedoms, Lord. And we pray that we would covet it and that we would protect it. Ask just now in this meeting that you would give us a portion of your wisdom as we discuss the LOIT tax, Lord. Please thank you, pray and christenate.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming tonight. It's a nice turn of words, the open public meeting on LOIT. It's not a public hearing and we have to have some ground rules to get through tonight. So what we need to do is whoever wants to speak for or against, please come to the forward microphones and state your name or where you're from and give us a two to three minute opinion of yours. We're not going to get into a panel of question and answer debate with each person or we'll be here this time tomorrow. At the end, we'll, each one of the county council members will respond as they see fit and then we'll close this meeting and then all the county council members, of course, will go on and think about and discuss to me what probably want to do things. So with that, we know that we are discussing the LOIT tax tonight. That's basically the agenda. This LOIT tax here is a LOIT tax for property relief, property tax relief. It's a dollar or double shift from revenue, property to revenue. The only part of it that's a new and true tax increase is a possible up to 0.25% for emergency services, which has to run parallel with an equal amount of LOIT until it reaches a quarter percent. So with that, who would like to be first to come up, state your name and present your opinions to the county council?
My name's Glenn Bang. I'll still be, I think, already coming. I'm not necessarily for or against them at this point, but I'd like to know, is it going to be an income tax or an employment tax? If it's going to be an income tax based on all income of all the residents of the county, I'll support it. If it's going to be an employment tax and it's only going to come out of the payroll of people that are working, I'm against it.
Thank you, Glenn. Which would represent income tax?
It's income tax. It's a one, it's up to a one and a quarter percent income tax.
And that's on all income?
It's all taxable, Indiana taxable income. I don't want to, it will be on your Indiana tax return as a one and a quarter percent. So if the state of Indiana exempts the income and it exempts certain income like social security income, then that would be on that, but it'd be anything that's taxable by the state of Indiana. Okay?
Thank you, Mees. Next?
I'm Jim Wallace from Winchester. And I've made a point in the last couple of weeks to talk to my friends and neighbors to get their feeling on what they think of this LOIT tax. And almost every one of them was against it that I talked to. And a few of them told me to tell you guys that they know what you do with that tax. Because their reasoning is simple. They've worked for five years with a ruptured terminal economy. They've been out there on the front line trying to make a living, pay the bills. And they've struggled and sacrificed to make a budget, which they have done because they had to do it. However, they think that you guys don't live within your budget. And you're not making the hard choices that you need to make. And that you're trying to take the easy way out and hold your hand out and expect the hardworking people in this county to give you money to pay for your extra expenses that's beyond your projected budget. And in closing here, they suggested that if you go ahead and override the people's wishes and vote this tax in anyway, that they would at least like for you to make it a temporary tax and have it on the books only long enough to get your financial business in order where you can get your budget balanced. And if it goes over that, they would like to see it put on the ballot to be voted on.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Jim. Next, please. Yes, sir.
Tony Bosworth, Farr, whatever. I've got something I'd like to read to you guys first and then comment on it, please. Thomas Jefferson issued this warning, "If American people ever allow private banks control, issue of currency, first by inflation, then by deflation, the banks and the corporations that will go up around them will deprive the people of all property until their children wake up homeless on the continent or father's continent." 1972, contrary to Jefferson's warning, Alexander Hamilton established a 20-year charter with the Bank of England. When the earl was denied in 1812, war broke out. Charter was renewed in 1816. In 1833, President Andrew Jackson revolved money from the charter bank and placed them into a state bank. Mexico invaded Texas in 1836 after renewal was again denied. Some historians say these wars were attempts by European banking monopolies to destruct and control American economy. The Civil War, Abraham Lincoln said, "I have two great enemies, the Southern Army in front of me, the bankers in the rear. Of the two, the one at my rear is the greatest foe." The industrialists were known as big business and Wall Street bankers as the money trust. The most prominent of these was J. P. Morgan, who created the financial panic of 1907 in an effort to promote a central bank. Woodrow Wilson's campaign for presidency was financed by Wall Street. By the time he became president in 1912, the plans of a central bank had been prepared. Wilson's chief advisor and administrator, Colonel Edward Mandel House, had close ties with Morgan Interse. House was also a representative of European banking monopolies and was a prom- promoted a world government. 1912, House wrote a book. He laid out a plan to bring America into a world government. On page 222, he wrote out, "Constitution and our laws are not only obsolete, but ever grotesque." His plan, in his own words, conspiracy would seek to achieve, to establish a central bank, a progressive graduated income tax to control the both parties, political parties, the United States. President Woodrow Wilson signed the Federal Reserve Act, December 23rd, 1913. Three years later, reflecting back on this, he said, "I have unwittingly ruined my country." Congressman Louis McFadden, chairman of the House Banking and Currency Committee, served with distinction for over 10 years in the 1920s. He said the depression was not accidental. International bankers sought to bring about a condition of despair here so that they might emerge as rulers of assault.
Mr. Bosworth, please, I'll give you, is there?
There is a point.
Yes, please.
Our dollar today, it takes 23 of these dollars to equal $1 in 1913. No matter how much tax you put, the feds are still going to keep printing money and you'll never have enough tax money. You'll never have enough tax money because they're going to keep printing more money, more money. I didn't get to the part about Henry Kissinger, but he said, "If we can control the oil and the money and the food, we can control this country." If feds control our money, they print our money. They control our oil because the main central bank of this country is the Rockefeller's. Rockefeller's controlled most of the oil in the world. They control a big percent of the OPEC oil. Right now in Indiana, state of Indiana, they've issued premise IDs to the farmers. When you sign up for a premise ID, you literally sign their property over to, under international ruling.
Can I ask you, sir, I get to ask you for your opinion on this particular LOIT tax?
There's no way you can have a tax without increasing and increasing and increasing. There's no way our money's going to keep, our money's going to keep deflating. They're going to have to cut costs because it's impossible. With our financial system, it's impossible to stay ahead of the tax. Can't even.
Thank you, sir.
There really has some good stuff.
I don't believe, we have, I don't think.
I'll tell you, I'll just, I'll just hand you some of these papers.
All right. Thanks, sir. Next, please. Yes?
My name's Ted Donald. I've been a county here for 48 years. I read in the paper here some time back where you said you had a deficit of $530,000. Also read in the same article where you was looking, maybe hiring an auditor to come in for $10,000 to $25,000. And I guess to you where your deficit was, I think you already know where that deficit is, or you should know. You printed it right away, printed in the paper, if that's correct. I'm not really sure in own mind what this LOIT tax is going to do. Not sure where it's going to go. It appears to me like the council and the commissioners are be putting their heads together, figure out where these deficits are and see if those can be reduced. I've never seen that told any place. And maybe you got that information, I don't know. When this facility here was redone, I call it Commissioner Foley because I think that's what it is, there was a bomb loaded to pay for this. You know, that's additional cost to the residents of this county. Your taxes you're talking about is an additional cost to the people of this county. It seems to me like it's time for politicians to do their job and start cutting taxes rather than charging these people. My other comment would be that why don't you let residents of Randolph County make this decision? If they want more services, let them vote yes. If they don't, let them vote no. It's a reason why you cannot put this on the ballot. Can you answer me that right now?
I don't know that much, but I'll write it down, point it down. I can ask our attorney, but we don't want to give a large question and answer debate or we won't get through a bunch of decisions.
It'd have to go through the State General Assembly to make that happen. You'd have to put it in a, they put it on a law or whatever and have a hearing and all that.
Well, you know, I don't know.
How long have you been debating gay marriage and all that stuff? I mean, so.
Well, I don't know about that, but I don't think they debated in Delaware County about the school buses. They thought on the ballot.
A local referendum.
Yeah?
Okay.
I contacted the state on this and they say no. And it's been confirmed, I.
You mean it cannot be put on the ballot for the residents to say yes or no?
Not without going through lots of hoops. I mean, it may take a year or two, the way things work. That's my understanding. And I guess Mees, maybe you find out more.
I didn't.
I had an attorney call me, Dave from Indianapolis, telling me that's it.
You know, I'm not disputing your word, but I can't believe this stuff gets on the ballot. It gets talked about two years ahead of time and it takes two years to get on the ballot. And I don't believe Delaware, two years ago, said we're going to put on the ballot to vote or we're going to raise the taxes for school buses.
I'd love to see it on the ballot and I've had more than one person ask me. That's why I started investigating it and it's just something that.
You know, there's going to be an end to taxes.
You're right.
You can't keep taxing people and taxing people and taxing people. Your job, you was elected to do is, in my opinion, is to do what you can with taxes you got. If you got to cut someplace, cut, make the cuts. You know, I could go around and ask every one of you, "Do you know where all the deficits are? What departments the deficits are, where they're at?" Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Brian Conklin, York City. Just a couple of comments that may help the public understand that we just went through the tax caps seven years ago. And in Union City, we cut 42% of our operating budget. What is the multiplier for the LOIT? What would be the multiplier? So if somebody wants to know what their actual impact would be, is it 1.25?
That's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
Maximum, any multiplier down to 0.01, I think, is.
So if you just use, well, 1% if you make $20,000 a year, it's $250. But in comparison, if you're also a homeowner, you get a break on your property tax.
Correct. If $4 million were brought in under 1% in LOIT, about $2, $2.5 million of that money would go back to cash payments to property owners of Randolph County. That's why the taxes shift.
So. They're just going to say they're not against the caps.
Right, they're not against the caps. The caps pay first.
So for the public, so they understand that if you see a tax here, you get a reduction over here.
Right, the only true increase is for emergency services. That is extra tax, absolutely not exceeding 4%.
So as my example, if you gives $20 an hour for an employee, that person would pay roughly $500 a year at 1%. And, but, so then they also, the other question I had, how many years has the county has had to dip into the rainy day fund to balance their budget?
We haven't got into the rainy day fund. We've spent on other research and accumulated.
Okay. How many years in the past, how many, in the past years have we gotten to?
I believe it's four.
So the past four years. Okay. No, I just wanted to point that out in regards to, you can't continue on in that direction. And I also wanted to explain, have you guys explained to the public in regard to when you get a tax here, do you get a reduction over here?
Right, and I'll explain that so everybody understands. Thank you. And what brought us with the mayor, who this has been arguing through, is circuit breakers have caused revenues to go down in Randolph County. Randolph County currently has about 13.9% circuit breaker, $3.2 million, I'm going on off the numbers. The state median, the median in the middle, is 4.8%. The state average is 9.9, taking the lowest and the highest. But the median being right around 4.8 and we're at 13.9. We're experiencing extraordinarily high circuit breaker reductions because of property tax caps that remain constitutional. It's not that we're trying to add to the coffers of Randolph County. We are working to recover those credits in a legal and lawful manner and that is a shift. That's why the local property tax reduction is not a tax extra. It's a shift from income to property. But everybody should understand that if you have a circuit breaker credit coming to you on your tax bill, the shift of money that comes your way as your cash payments, that credit will be reduced first you don't get both credits. But Randolph County has $233,000 in 2012 towards 2013 of homestead properties that are, that much money of circuit breaker tax. The LOIT also comes out in three different styles. Who gets the money? All taxpayers, homestead properties only, homestead and commercial. I believe that's the language. And it also comes in, the county council decides all these, which levels, up to 1%, 1% only. So when these taxes come and there are people paying these taxes, there are also property owners who are retired or on fixed income who are paying through their property. What I at least am advocating is paid through income. So while you are working, you are paying for those services. When you are not working for any reason whatsoever, you immediately quit paying. But as it is now, you continue to pay as long as you own property in Randolph County. So this is just a shift of the burden from property to income. The only true tax increase, that doesn't mean some people won't pay more. Transparency, I will tell you, there are some people who will be in that law. They'll end up paying more. They won't get as much credit on their property as they pay the LOIT. That's a fact.
That's based about the renters.
As far as?
Renters will pay, they, they're nothing. I mean, they pay it all. They get no benefit whatsoever from the LOIT.
The renters?
Right, they have no property and they pay the tax period.
Well, but the property owner of that rental pays the tax.
They don't benefit the renter.
Well, but the renter, who's not a vested property owner in Randolph County, also is getting services from the county through the property tax. So it's just a fair way to help shift it over that everybody pays for those services that are out there that are rented. Anyway, that's.
One more comment. I contacted Jay County, which is a county similar in size to Randolph County. And I would suggest that our county council and county commissioner, county auditor, reach out to Jay County, same size, very similar complexion of manufacturing and agriculture. And they, when they saw the tax caps coming, they enacted the full 1%.
They did. Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Don Mont and I'm on the town council at Saratoga. And I read all the articles in the paper and everybody's actually right. Depends on how you look at it. But every time they mention something, they mention tax caps. And that's something that should go away. It's here to stay. It had to be done because there wasn't any of our government entities that could live within their means. So, you know, you have to do what you have to do. And if you make the wrong decision, I guess we'll just vote you out or we'll be voted out. It's that simple. But everybody expects services, but there isn't anybody that wants to pay for it. And when you talk about property taxes, if you're on the town council, you realize how many properties aren't being taxed because of whether their houses are enough or whether they come in and their, their credits take them down to zero. And how can, how can towns continue to function like that? And you keep saying property taxes will go down, but what assurances do you have that they won't take the credit away from us, the home state credit?
What do I mean?
You don't have any. So if they take that away, what happens to the property taxes?
Circuit breakers will get extra.
Well, possibly, but no. If you live in a $40,000 house and you're over 65, you pay zero tax. Something I brought up to the superintendent of schools when he was talking about that. What happens, and it'll never happen, of course, but what happens if you take all rental properties and make them owner occupied? What does that do to your budget? I mean, rental properties are taxed at 2%. Owner occupied at 1%. Most of your rentals are worth.
I didn't understand the question.
Most of your rentals are worth $40,000 or less. So if it's worth $35,000 as a rental, you pay $700 in property tax. If it's owner occupied, you get zero.
Correct. I understand the question.
You say it never happens. It happened in Ridgefield. One man bought over 20 properties and sold them all on contract. So they went from whatever to say that's worth $20,000, their property taxes went from $8,000 to nothing. So it's something really, they should have looked at the tax caps down the road and started making adjustments in. And it's, it's harder on smaller towns. So if you take away property taxes there, what's, what's the smaller town share of LOIT?
Their, whatever their percentage of the circuit breaker return will be. So you'd have to look at your circuit breaker in Saratoga, how much is there? And the cash payments coming back, if we leave that circuit breaker, if we go back into the government proportion of property.
So you're saying it's a wash?
No, it depends on how, it's very complex. It depends on how much that property owner would get back from the LOIT shift over as property tax reduction. Now, reduction would be a pay to, credit to the homeowners, their property taxes would go down unless they're already getting that credit as a circuit breaker. And it'll pay the circuit breaker off first. And when that gets paid off, that money returns to its local units. So it all depends on how it shakes out and who's paying what and how much.
So you're saying a small town like Saratoga or Motoc could actually take a big hit?
No, they would actually benefit from LOIT tax. They would benefit as the circuit breaker went down.
Okay, I will see. All I can tell you is vote your conscience and there's always another election coming.
Always. Next, please. Yes, sir.
Captain Earl Winchester, Indiana. Me and my wife's income, even if it was a half a percent, every $450 a year. And I mean, you can do the math from there to see what our income is. You know, that's, that's two and a half months of heating bills. You know, so I gotta manage my money. I mean, just manage your debt a lot better. Right here. Estimated total cost of economic development progress to the sum of $2.5 million. Is this free money given out?
No, but these number development funds belong in a round with commissioners and the added boards not the town council.
Well, somebody needs budget money. I mean, this, this is ridiculous. To me, that's free money. Well, uh, somebody needs budget money, I mean, this, this, this is ridiculous, to me, that's free money, nobody's, it's my understanding, and I'll take an example, did you roofing promises to employ thirty-three more people? Who monitors that?
There's a contract auditor that will check and see if they meet the requirements of their deal on their contract.
Trying to make copies of that for three days and have not got anything out of them yet.
True.
But again, that's-
If he doesn't meet that, does he have to pay the money back?
I don't know how his contractors were written per se, without it in front of him, I don't know, but again, th- this is the eda board of Randolph County, and the county commissioner did not approve you of the county council. Seriously, the county council has no say so, and we can talk to our representatives, as you can, but there's an eda board, there's eda board, there's commissioners, and that's, that's a different scenario than-
Well, what you want, but I don't, now, I understand that, what you want, but I'm just, I'm just trying to get the point across, that there's a lot of things going on with our county tax money that, that I feel like shouldn't be going on, it can be managed a lot better. I, I just, I just don't, I, I just don't think that I should have to pay out four hundred and fifty dollars more a year, when I gotta manage my money. I mean, like I say, that's, that's two heating bills for my family a year, their families out there that, that can't, that couldn't afford to pay seventy-five dollars a year.
Right, thank you. Right, next. Yes, ma'am.
Wiki Danny, City Winchester, and I'm here as a taxpayer. I think what Mr. Monroe's point was, and I understand that this board is not responsible for the eda, it's an income tax. And the low it is also an income tax. And I really believe that when you go for the income tax, just like when eda was designed, it was designed for economic development. Well, we all know now that the legislators have changed that, and that can be to go for anything. The low it is, my understanding is that it just goes for public safety?
No.
What is, what, tell me what low it, what, what my income taxes will go to pay for if the low it is enacted?
The public safety low it, which is one of seven low it, will go to support public safety. In simple form, sheriff's department, ambulance department, anything connected to that. The low it tax for property tax relief, your income taxes will go to relieve property taxes.
So, that's the low it that you are considering right now?
Right, it's not, it's not-
Is not the public safety?
No.
Right, okay, that's-
I am, personally, and I would, I, I am also, I, I want the, for, for the public safety as well.
That's gotta be part of it anyway, right?
No, no, it's not. But you can't have public safety unless you have equal portions of the low for property tax relief along with it. Until you reach a quarter percent, and the public safety stops at a quarter percent.
One, one thing about the public safety side, it has to be spent on public safety. However, it's a new tax, we can divert other money that's already being spent on public safety, so-
I get that, right, of your general fund, if you're paying for-
Of the general fund, so technically it's a new tax.
Right, okay, it is a new tax. But I, I would hope that if, I, I do not, I'm not in favor of it, the city of Winchester, uh, we've survived through things. Um, we've, we've done a lot of cutting. I mean, we have, there isn't one, there's only one department that has not, um, either been reduced with at least an employee or hours in a department as well. And that is not a, you know, it's not something that we're proud of, it's something that, it's just the way, you know, when someone left, we didn't replace them. So, in that way, we were very fortunate that way. But I still, um, as far as another tax for the taxpayers, I would hope that you would consider not doing that until you can look into every option, until you can look into, until you can say, you know what? We've, we've taken every department, we've went through it all, we went through every office, you know. I really hope that you really do this and, and in the way of researching and finding out, that this, you know, we just don't have any other choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, I have to-
Yes, you may.
I just want to make clear that public safety option, a quarter percent, doesn't alter Winchester. It would go to every, uh, every city, so Winchester would get a portion of it, Union City, Albany, Orlando, San Diego, Randolph County, original in Saratoga. So, I just want to make sure, and those would be the tax units that would get a portion, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
If I could add something, it wasn't about, uh, five years ago, they had a meeting out at the Beeson Clubhouse, and I don't, they had somebody from Purdue come in there, do you remember that, Vicky?
Larry Pauls.
Yeah, he come in there, and that's when the county and, and all the towns were starting to look at, at the pressures of what they was gonna have to do. And that man never stressed cutting costs, the whole meeting, he never stressed cutting costs. And if, if a lot of people in here don't understand, the state will not help any county or town or township or what have you until you've exhausted every tax that is available to your commissioners to pass. So, you basically have to be broke before the state will come in and help you. And they won't help Randolph County at all until they pass this tax and then go broke. Is that right, Neat? Did I understand that man right when he said that?
I'm not sure what help you're discussing.
But any, any help at all? I mean, they, they said they wouldn't come in and do anything until you actually passed everything that was-
My opinion is they're probably not gonna come in and help you anyway.
Well, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that point. But, but the point the man made was if you don't pass this tax, don't look to us for any help.
I would think that would be probably a very accurate statement.
Well, I went to that meeting, and, and that's all he stressed, was passing more taxes or, or bumping, bumping the, the available rate up to town or the county that was available to max out your rate.
I could tell you this, they would not help unless you max out your real tax, the state would come and help with the higher rates.
And, and your real tax is any tax that's available.
I was talking real tax.
Oh, we-
Yeah, we had discussed that, and I do know that individuals have come in and said, the state will not help you unless you max out.
Well, it was my understanding they wouldn't help you at all until you pass every available option and go from there.
Thank you, next.
Are you allowed to fly?
Briefly, because I just-
A quick question.
Yes.
You know, uh, sir, if, if, if we run this county, or, or politicians run this county, it's broke, we shouldn't ask for help, we shouldn't get any help. If we can't do any better than that, we shouldn't ask the state for help. But I really wanted to ask, I keep listening to you, and you talk about the low it tax is going to reduce property tax. How much is going to reduce property tax, and are you gonna increase that low it tax enough to make up for the property tax you're gonna lose?
Well, there are-
Well, if you, if you do it, but back in twenty eleven, I'm sorry, June twenty, second twenty, there was an analysis. If you do the one percent low it tax, and not talking about public safety, that would raise four million dollars, roughly, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, I believe, that was. And that would, uh, reduce approximately two point five million dollars countywide of, of property taxes. So, a four million dollar rough tax would reduce people's property by two point five million dollars, and the extra one point five million dollars would go against people's credits that they are receiving. Uh, and that would be for, uh, property owners, for, for all property owners, but mostly, that disproportionately hit, um, the, uh, rental units, the two percent property, we call it, and the three percent industrial property. So, this sounds to be analysis.
Really good change in where the tax is coming from.
Exactly.
Right, yes, thank you, next please. Anybody else?
Can I take a second?
Now, everybody else, please, please brief, a minute or less, please. Neat's right there, we already-
I'll be quick, uh, I'm gonna say something that's gonna upset a lot of people. Uh, and I, me, so I've, you know, I've been thinking about your answer to my further question. And if it's gonna be an income tax, it needs to be an income tax. There shouldn't be exemptions. Everybody who lives in accounting uses all of the services. Everybody who lives in accounting, no matter what their source of income, should help support those services. And I know this is gonna upset a lot of people, but you gotta get, you, you can't do the exemption. Unemployment has to be counted as income, welfare has to be counted as income, social security has to be counted as income. You, you have to make it a true income tax, not an employment tax. The working class people are already paying, they don't buy-
These rules were set for us, we don't make the rules.
I, I know, but you need to consider it before you pass it, that if you're gonna do it, you, you need to go all the way or no way.
But we cannot, we cannot supersede the law on tax legislation.
And, and that's where-
This is state representative, you can call your state representative.
Next please. Anybody else, please? Keep going, first, we've got more minutes, uh, just like where everybody has to buy, because they're tired. Then we'll, uh, close the portion for my- Yes, sir.
Just also to keep in mind that, uh, we have the business property tax that's staring us in the face as well, that's probably gonna pass.
Thank you. So, here in the vendor, so we'll close the portion for public comments, and then, uh, then just one of the council members' final comments, and then we'll be done tonight. Are there any other comments from the public, please? Okay, hearing none, we'll close this portion right here for comments from the public, and then we'll start, and, uh, Jake, anything to add tonight?
Just like that, everybody can go in, pushing their opinion.
Tom, anything to add? Bob?
Uh, let's go back to eda. I know it's not under our control, but we can talk to commissioners, eda board about it. Uh, for example, for calling services, we give sixty thousand from the county, we give twenty-four thousand from the city. Two different eda plans, all that money, th- there's a lot of waste here, and there's no control over it, I've talked to people, uh, talked to Bruce about it, um, they're, they're coming up with a new plan on how to be more tighter in on the regulations and the rules and everything else, but to try and get a hold of the documents, try to figure out what exactly went on with that money and whether it's gonna be paid back, you have no idea, I think they wasted a lot of money over the years on this eda, and it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be looked at real intense. Uh, another thing, um, the unlawful report, uh, brought up consolidation of service territories, fire protection territories, consolidation of services provided by multiple taxing units. Mayor Conklin brought this up a few years ago, same way, county needs to desperately start working with cities and towns in an effort to consolidate services to stop the flood of tax money being wasted on duplicate services. This would require thinking outside the box and doing things differently. The mindset of, that's the way we've always done it, doesn't work as an excuse anymore, this comes from the clerk of Union City. That's all I got.
Thank you, Bob, next.
Uh, so what you suggested, that if we do it, make it a temporary tax, and, uh, I've never heard of a temporary tax. Once you put it in, it's almost impossible to get rid of. Anyway, I, personally, we have got to exhaust every avenue of revenue and cost cutting before I would consider an additional tax.
Thank you, next, Dave?
Um, thanks everyone for coming, I'm saying this next, I think we have to evaluate all of our ledger fund accounts and make sure that we can transfer some, um, we do have some new monies coming in this year, uh, I'll share that next council meeting.
I know, uh, Don asked about the circuit breaker in Saratoga. Just to let you know, we did the analysis, the baseline for Saratoga was about thirty thousand dollars, circuit breaker losses. That, that the one percent low it tax would have been established, there would have been about twenty thousand dollars of circuit breaker losses. So, they would have had about ten thousand dollars more in their budget. And also for Saratoga, they would have had about ten thousand dollars more in, um, if it's a low it tax for the public safety. I just wanted to let you know that, I know you asked, would you, would you-
No, thank you.
Scoring from the analysis.
Okay, I, uh, I appreciate everybody telling, I, I, my stand on it is I believe we did, I think we're already there. Uh, I believe that the council's forming, and at, at today, the cutting has been extraordinary, it's been extreme, uh, we're at dangerous levels now, and the money that was, that was reduced for Randolph County local governments wasn't the county doing it, it was done, statements done by the voters, and it was done through circuit breakers that were laid upon us. We have services we have to provide, we have courses we have to provide and support, we have no choices whatsoever on that. Can we escape through this through another year? It is possible that we can. But we are running reserves down, and we are very through, very tight. We even have comp time issues that are related to the manpower out there being cut down. So, nobody likes it, I would prefer not to pay any more tax. I, I guess I understand differently, the shift is a shift, it's not new tax, however I do understand, there'll be those who pay a little bit more in the shift. But when we, when we tell people that can't afford any more money out of their paychecks, there are people who are already paying that. It's already being paid through the property tax. And the prop, those people on the property tax who may not have any revenue whatsoever, but it don't matter, they're still paying the money. A low it for property tax relief would shift that burden to those who are working, and not on those who just because they own property in Randolph County have to pay it no matter what, that's why I am for it. The only added tax that I am for is the one four percent for emergency services, and I believe our emergency services need that. The demands on emergency services today, just like anybody that goes to the hospital, and they see how much the bills are going up and how much cross referencing is going on, demands on our sheriff's department, our ambulance department, all departments out there providing are growing, they're growing faster than the tax, than, than the assessed valuation. Our assessed valuation is running at about two percent a year, and I would say services are running at five, six, seven percent. And they're not slowing down. So, I hear everybody quite clear, I do. I spend a lot of time on it, I hear all my colleagues on the county council, so there's no vote tonight, we're all gonna go home and think about it. But it will be put on the agenda, it will come up for a yes or no up or down vote. We have to do it, if we're gonna do it by October. If it does not get it, if we do not have the majority votes, then we do not. That's America, that's the way it works. But then we're going to have to find a way to operate this county efficiently. And if we take a lot of the cuts out there, and we say, okay, we're making everyone the suggestion, we still might come up four hundred thousand dollars short. That's the real scenario that we're in. I appreciate everybody here, all the elected officials come, and I really appreciate the stability of the meeting, I really do. It's, it can be a tough thing to go, so thank you very much, let's close this meeting and have a great evening.